Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Beth Thornton, Chairman of the Town Council. Welcome to the November 5th meeting of the Trumbull Town Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, everyone, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, and just. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dawn Contafio.
Here.
Bill Mecca.
Here.
Michael Miller.
Here.
Donna Sidell. Donna, you're muted. I see Dawn. Mary Isaac.
Yeah.
Tony Sento.
Here.
Keith Klein. Kevin Shively.
Here.
Thomas Whitmore.
Here.
Mary Beth Thornton.
Here.
Jason Marsh.
Here.
Aram Masaro.
Here.
Eric Paulson.
Here.
Lori Razasco-Schwarz.
Here.
Joanne Glasser-Warrenstein.
Here.
Steve Lemoine. Steve Lemoine. Joe Garrett.
Here.
Bruce Helsin.
Here.
Joy Cologne.
Here.
Ashley Guardiano.
Here.
And Lisa Valente.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We have a quorum, and now we enter the public comment portion of our meeting. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak to any of the resolutions that we're presenting tonight, please raise your hand in the chat, and we'll let you in, and we'd like to hear from you.
Madam Chair, Mr. Black is interested in speaking. Members of the public who are interested in speaking, you can press the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen, and if you're calling in on the phone, it's star nine.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Black, you should be all set.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Thornton. Mark Block, 60 Ridoo Avenue. I wanted to speak for just a minute about Resolution TC 28-111 to approve the purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of real property. In the interest of transparency and openness, I believe that the council has a number of questions that need to be answered for the public, and I think the public has an obligation to be spoken to. And chiefly, why are these properties being purchased on Hardy Lane at what cost? And what is the intended end use? We shouldn't commit money on a speculative land acquisition where neither the need nor the purpose is laid out. And the plan of conservation and development calls for a facilities plan. And the fact is, there is no facilities plan here. We're buying property on impulse. That's not my quote. That's a quote from Planning and Zoning member Anthony Silver back in 2016. At the time, the council was considering the purchase of property on Old Churchill Road under previous administration. So I think that there, again, in fairness and openness and in a conversation that the community should have about the expenditure of what I'm going to assume, although you'll be dealing with in an executive session, is in the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars are properties that the public should have a much clearer understanding about before the council approves that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
Madam Chair, there's no other resident with their hand raised wishing to speak.
All right, thank you very much. Then that concludes our public comment portion of the meeting. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes. So Dawn Contafio. Thank you, may I have a second?
Second, Joanne Glasser-Warrenstein.
Thank you. Any discussion or modifications to the minutes from our October meeting? Hearing none, I'd like a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, we have a motion to approve.
Oh, we have a motion to approve, okay. Can I take a unanimous vote? Can I call it a unanimous vote? To approve? Yes? Yes. Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Okay, we have two items for discussion this evening on our agenda. One is the Trumbull Veterans and First Responders Center Building Committee update, and we have former First Life Man Ray Baldwin and Chairman of that committee with us this evening. Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. There's not much to report since the October meeting where the council approved Wiles Associates as the architect for the project. We have met as a committee and approved a floor plan for the site, for the building. And Mr. Wiles has engaged companies to do property surveying. This is being done on the land. The steep grant from the state of Connecticut is still pending. We have preliminary indications that it's going to be approved, but it hasn't been formalized yet by the state. We're waiting, we were waiting till after the election to see who our state delegation is going to wind up being. I think it stayed the same. So we will be having meetings with our state delegation to see what we can do about some state bonding as well. Beyond that, there's not much else to report unless anybody has any questions I can answer.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Baldwin. We appreciate the update. And we will next hear from our sustainability team. And I know that congratulations are in order. And we have, who do we have here this evening to speak to this discussion item?
We've got Kevin Malone, who's on our commission. He's going to be speaking for everybody, and Kevin is on the Nature and Arts Center. So he'll be addressing that as well. We did receive bronze certifications, Mary Beth was saying. We got that last week, so Trumbull is now a certified sustainable town. So yay for us, and now Kevin's going to present.
Thank you, Mary. Kevin Malone here. As Mary says, I am President of the Trumbull Nature and Arts Center and speaking tonight on behalf of the Trumbull Advisory Sustainability Team, also known as Sustainable Trumbull. Everybody can hear me, wave your hands if I'm not committed. I'm all good. All right, thank you. So just a little background. The Sustainable Trumbull Team was created by the Town Council through a resolution in 2018 because, quote, "Trumbull embraces an ongoing process of working toward greater sustainability." Why is this important? Because sustainability is a comprehensive and unifying concept that can improve our lives in numerous ways. When considering sustainability, people often think about solar energy, recycling, electric cars. But that's all true, but there's a lot more to it. The sustainable community has a vibrant arts and cultural scene. We support local businesses. We provide for quality housing. In fact, the Sustainable CT Organization that oversees the certification process has nine different areas that Trumbull had to satisfy in order to become sustainably certified. So I'm just going to share my screen now with you real quick, just to give you a little bit of, here we go. I guess, here we go. So you can see the, move this around a little bit. So this is the nice little leaf that, I don't know, Mary, Daddy made this. Somebody made this lovely, this lovely leaf that summarizes the nine different areas of sustainability that we had to address. And we did have our work cut out for us under the Sustainable CT Program. The Sustainable Trumbull Team initially had just myself, Rob LeBrandy, Town Planner, Shelby Lovino from Economic Community Development Commission, and from the Conservation Commission, Mary Ellen Lemay, Richard Post, and our good friend Chris McCormick, who we sadly lost earlier this year. We immediately realized what a huge undertaking this was to pursue Sustainable CT Certification. There's nearly 200 different possible actions that one can take. And in order to get 200 or more points for bronze certification, we needed to complete many of these actions. We started out slowly figuring it all out. Fortunately, after a few months, we got some new volunteers, including Mary Isaac, Mari Jackson, April Lang, and Pam Roman, who I fondly refer to as the SWOT Team. SWOT, in this case, stands for Sustainable Women's Alliance of Trumbull. So the SWOT Team swooped in and got us moving, along with some now former Trumbull High School students, who I'd also like to mention, Sarah Dawson, Gabby Pukarczyk, and Nancy Lee. They took the bull by the horns. We started to make real progress. And then after more than a year of work, we were notified just a couple weeks ago that we had, in fact, achieved bronze level certification. So in addition to improving quality of life, bronze certification can benefit the town by giving us an advantage when applying for certain grant funding from the state of Connecticut. The details of this are still being developed. It's a new program, so they're trying to work that into it. Many other towns have already achieved certification. In fact, some like Fairfield and Stratford have reached silver certification. So we're also moving in that direction, and we hope to achieve silver certification ourselves in the next couple of years. So I want to give you a quick summary of what we're hoping to achieve here next, in the next go around, here's some of our near-term goals. So we hope to work with, I'm going to go out of order here a little bit, but one of the big things we started working on was the Pollinator Pathway Program. We're trying to help restore the shrinking populations of native bees, monarch butterflies, by having more native plantings, removing invasives, reducing pesticide usage. And one that's surprising to some people is less leaf blowing and more leaf mulching, because the eggs on the bottom of the leaves are an important part of the life cycle of butterflies and such. Another important thing that a lot of people are not aware of is that our, and Jim Nordman is going to talk about this quite later after I'm done, but the Paquonic River watershed, the Paquonic River itself is considered an impaired water body. It suffers from high levels of bacteria and particulates. So we hope to work with all interested parties to improve that through streamside plantings. You may have seen in Old Mine Park where that was done effectively to mitigate runoff. Other erosion control and prevention measures will be implemented. Couple other things we hope to do in the area of energy usage is to have an audit of all the municipal buildings for energy improvement opportunities and for the use of renewable energy as prices continue to fall for those for solar and wind power. Few other things, increasing recycling opportunities at the transfer station and in the schools, reducing the use of styrofoam and single-use plastics, increasing composting, reducing food waste. There's a number of things here, and we'll talk about a few of them as I skip forward to my final slide here. And this is, how do we achieve these things? How do we get there? And of course, the most important thing is collaboration, teamwork, using all available resources. So of course, this was the town of Trumbull that was certified. We sort of helped things out, moved things along, organized everything, submitted things. And we took actually a number of actions on our own as the Sustainable Trumbull Team. But we want to work more closely with the town, look to Town Council for support. The Technology Department is important for us to communicate effectively. Public Works, there is a lot of opportunities for recycling at the transfer station that we do not have, not yet, taken advantage of. Parks Department, of course, is huge for pollinator pathway, for native plantings, for invasive removal. The Building Department, working with them on the energy issues particularly, and then land acquisitions, public planning and zoning for open space preservation. All right, so we want to be able to work effectively, communicate effectively with the town. Also, now that it is silver, we have to reach out to other groups within the town, and we're going to focus on, one of those groups is going to be the low-income residents who are suffering particularly from the pandemic and the recession. You know, how can we, how can we support them? What can we do to help? So there's opportunities hopefully there. We want to look to get as many new volunteers as we can. For example, there's a virtual cleanup this Saturday from 10:00 to noon. I know not a lot of people have heard about it, it was in the paper. You know, that's just one opportunity here for volunteers, and hopefully we'll be able to get more people interested. You can find, you can follow us on Facebook, communicate with us on Facebook. We have an email. If you go to the town website, you can find our email information and contact information there. So we're looking for as much assistance. You know, this is big. It took us a long time to get everything done that we wanted to get done, and there's still just a ton of opportunities. So other organizations in town that we want to reach out to, the Trumbull Nature and Arts Center obviously is huge. At TEAC, we've already done, that was part of Sustainable CT, was the Invasives Removal Project that we did there. We also have a monarch waste station. We've got scouts working on other projects. There's a lot of stuff I can go on about the Nature Center, obviously, but garden clubs, scouts, Trumbull Community Women. These are all, you know, areas, people, groups that we want to reach out to that we can partner with. Want to work with other towns, as I mentioned, Fairfield and Stratford have already received silver certification. So we could probably, Fairfield already helped us to get started on when we started looking at our own certification. Maybe we can help Bridgeport. We've already talked to one of the representatives from Bridgeport who's trying to get things going there. We can work, Sustainable CT likes when we work as teams, as across borders. So what can we do to help, you know, our neighbors to the south, for example? How can we partner with other neighbors? Now, businesses, here's an opportunity that, I don't think people really realize that some of our businesses in town, Henkel, Unilever, Amazon, Apple, Lockheed Martin, these companies all have very detailed, ambitious sustainability plans of their own. They've had them for years. They've been working hard to, and there's a whole bunch of different things that they seek to improve. And they're actually the leaders, at this point, they're leading the charge in this country, I think. They all have goals for waste reduction, water conservation, renewable energy, energy efficiency, climate change. They're addressing employee well-being, workplace safety. All these things are part of sustainability plans. It gives you an idea of how encompassing the idea, the concept of sustainability is, and it also gives you an idea of how important it is for our, for us and for our children particularly to understand this is a very important, growing field with a lot of opportunities. So what can we learn from these businesses? I have contacts through the Nature Center and through my own business with some of these companies, and so I'm looking forward to developing those relationships, you know, get some sort of roundtable kind of thing going, where we can share ideas and knowledge. Lastly, and not leastly, is our students. As I mentioned, getting students involved in sustainability is a priority, obviously. For us, we're hoping to engage students more. We did have students in the first round, as I mentioned, some of the students' names already who helped us out. You know, they're interested in doing recycling. They're interested in all of these things. So we're going to reach out to the schools, the Trumbull High Schools Environmental Club. There's a Biology Club also that we can reach out to. And, you know, eventually, I think sustainability issues are going to become part of the curriculum, because it is so important, it's such an important field, and it's a good way to learn, they call cross-cutting, different disciplines where you can learn about sociology. You can learn about STEM. You can learn about arts and nature, arts and culture, and so forth. In fact, getting back to the Nature Center for a moment, at TEAC, we have developed our own sustainable sustainability plan for environmental education. And so that's, we're already taking steps to try to reach out, and because we have, right now, we have no field trips, unfortunately, no live ones, but we're looking to have more virtual lessons in the meantime, until we can get back to the live action stuff. So we were going to try to educate on a lot of these topics that we've been discussing. So you can, if you go onto the Trumbull Nature and Arts Center.org, you can download the sustainability plan that we have there. And so there's, this is really a team effort that I want to let everybody know is going to be, we're going to be doing this for a while, and we're going to be coming to you, looking for your assistance. So whatever, you know, whatever ideas you have, we're most interested to hear. Before I kick it over to Jim Nordman and his presentation on the natural resource inventory, is there any questions that anybody would like to oppose that I might be able to answer?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I did have one quick question. So you mentioned, one of the things that popped out was things about like reducing leaf blowing and encouraging mulching. Have you considered, or have you discussed at all, methods to educate homeowners, especially in those areas where they're living along watersheds or things like that? Is there any method that you've talked about educating those people about things that they can do to assist in this?
Yeah, I think I could probably pass this to someone else on the Conservation Commission who might be able to answer it better. I don't know, Richard or Mary Ellen, or does anybody have any thoughts on that? I think they probably sent out some flyers and stuff, but that's a, you know, that's a good question. And that's, you know, it's obviously something that we've been, you know, trying to, considering, how do we best provide this information to people? And so that's, that is an important thing among many things that we're trying to communicate. You know, there's the old mail, the old mail system is kind of falling away, and now it's becoming more digital. That's why we're hoping to work with the Technology Department to be able to provide this information on the town website more effectively without overwhelming, you know, the people who have to actually do that job, how to block and so forth.
Right, I only ask just because if you bring us ideas where, you know, we can approve things that actually help to actually implement, it will help us to, you know, be able to approve and get things moving in the right direction towards making sure that everybody knows the options that are available to them to actually help achieve these goals.
Right, yeah, thank you.
This year was really, we were concentrating on getting our certification, and so really going through those tasks. And, oh, sorry, Mary Isaac. And so now, round two, we are definitely going out on education, and how do we get all of the commissions? And when Jim speaks, he's got a great presentation. How do we get the other commissions and boards involved and to educate residents? And businesses and the community overall. So we'll be getting all of that out there in the coming weeks, months, and this year.
Just a quick question, just through the chair, didn't you offer a webinar this summer and things like that, if I recall? Yes, there were several, this is April Lang. There were several Zoom webinars that were done over the summer in August into September. We did one on composting. There was one on reduction of plastics within your house. There was one on energy done by Mari. So there was at least three or four, and one on pollinator pathways that we did for the town. And those are definitely some that we could redo again to get more participation, but it's definitely one avenue that we could use some support on to get more residents to attend them.
Yeah, I'm Richard Post with Conservation. And just to answer Kevin's question, we've sent out a small number of brochures with mailings of one we did to some lake residents about having a buffer between their yards and so on. So there are things, you know, kind of the old-fashioned snail mail roots that can be done. But I think that can go along with another town mailing. But also, I think some of the electronic media is good. And also QR codes, those are those, you know, square codes you see on packages. And if there is an interesting site like at Old Mine Park, for example, you can have something as simple as a post sticking up, and then a QR code. You scan that with your smartphone, and that'll bring you to a website with more information. So I think the social media, electronic media, you know, community TV are ways that we can expand knowledge and train people. I think the young people, the high school students we have, that's a generation that's going to be most affected, you know, by climate change and so on, and will benefit the most by what we do today, which is makes Trumbull sustainable now throughout, you know, throughout the eons going forward.
Hi, everyone. Pam Roman. Just wanted to mention that we have a Facebook page. We have a Twitter account. We have a YouTube channel and an Instagram account. So we're active posting these things. We've got pretty good following on Facebook. And if you go to Facebook, you can click on any of our Zoom presentations that we've made. It'll connect you right over to the YouTube channel.
Okay, thank you very much. We have the Chairman of the Conservation Commission with us this evening, Mary Ellen Lemay, who will introduce our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As Mary Beth said, I'm Mary Ellen Lemay. I'm the Chair of the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission has been, we've been in a meeting probably about 10 years now. And natural resource inventory is something that the state of Connecticut actually places the charge or responsibility on the conservation commissions of each town to create a natural resource inventory. And it's a very daunting task, and especially in a place like Trumbull where we have so much open space. And so for many years, we've had this on our wish list. And in 2019, we found a environmental consultant who could do this for us. And for close to the last two years, he's been, had his boots on and been in every single one of our open spaces, close to 1,000 acres, he's walked in our town. And he has done a direct observation of our open space properties in town. So the purpose of Trumbull doing a natural resource inventory is because it actually is, it's a baseline of information that the town can use and the decision-makers in the town, the planners, the land use commissions can make informed decisions regarding development, conservation, and natural resource management. So this natural resource inventory, which is a fairly massive document, will be a great tool for us, along with our Plan of Conservation and Development, along with our Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, and along with our Paquonic River watershed plan, and now our new Sustainable CT initiative. So this inventory will document natural resources, their importance to the town, identify the threats to the health and integrity of these resources. And Jim has done an amazing job of helping us identify this. Recommend policies for the Plan of Conservation Development, and recommend ongoing strategies and actions to protect the resources. So I wanted to So I wanted to introduce Jim Norgren, who is the environmental consultant. Jim holds a master's degree. In environmental management from the Yale School of Forestry. He holds an MBA from the Wharton School of Finance. A BA from St. Lawrence University and holds a U S Fish and Wildlife License to possess raptors for educational purposes. And is a qualified forester for the Watershed Agricultural Council. And his real claim to fame is that he was on the Martha Stewart Show too. His Raptors. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce my friend, Jim Norgren, who's done an amazing job for the town of Trumbull. And we are very grateful for the work you've done, Jim. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Ellen. I'm going to share my screen. And. Hope you can see that. I'm going to run through this in the interest of your time as quickly as I can. And please interrupt with any questions or comments. I'm going to first go through quickly the methodology. And then spend most of the time on the outcomes or results that we found. And as you can see on the cover here. It was just a pleasure to walk your 52 parks and other open space properties. And as you know, there's just some beautiful habitats in Trumbull. This is. A shot I took of the Paquonic River and particularly the east side of Paquonic River Valley Park. Old Mine Park, Beach Memorial and Twin Brooks have intact, mature. Wooded habitats that are just beautiful and really untouched, even by farming in the past, very pristine. And as soon as you get out of the parking lot, I've walked in there and you're right in the middle of the wilderness. So. You just have some beautiful parks and I'd mentioned other recently acquired open space. Properties like the old Tashwick Tree Farm is kind of undiscovered and beautiful. I was able to walk that with some of the Conservation Commission partners. And also Mary Bill is another fairly new property that's not designated a park, but is a real treasure. The. I always like to start with why we're doing this. Because a lot of people say, you know, why are we doing a natural resource inventory? And it's authorized by Connecticut statutes. Conservation Commission may do a natural resource inventory and it shall or should keep an index of open areas. And as far as the difference, there is none between an open space index and a natural resource inventory. It's a question of emphasis, but we treat them the same way. But it's nice to know that the Connecticut statutes. Do authorize conservation commissions to do this. And I would also note that your main planning document in Trumbull, the P O C D. Endorses natural resource inventory and it says, and you can read this. Developers should use it in applications and the inventory can determine which parcels are permanently protected. Let me mention, and Mary Ellen went through them briefly. The goals of N R I are very simple. Identify your natural resources in Trumbull, woods, et cetera. Identify the threats and those are all familiar to you. In addition to development, stormwater pollution. Flooding, very important in Trumbull, and of course, climate change affecting everybody. And then come up with options and strategies, actions we can take to protect our natural resources. I want to show you the map of the parcels and parks that we walked, 52. Wish I had a Fitbit, a real labor of love. We got this list from Park Ranger Steve Chapman, so it's fairly thorough of everything owned in town. The one conclusion from this map is although you have some large parks, most of Trumbull, 98, 99% of it is developed. So the focus going forward of the natural resource inventory. Is going to be on getting to landowners. And I was glad to hear that comment from. The other Kevin, what are you doing to educate homeowners? And. When you think about it, with 12,000 homes in town, mostly developed, if you're going to protect the environment, it's going to mainly have to come from. Good practices from homeowners. I'm going to give just a quick example of the Beach Memorial Park. As, as typical of the 52 parks we, we walked. And so you get a sense of what we did with each parcel. So just briefly, we looked at the natural resources at Beach Memorial, you know, fairly obvious. Well, maybe not. I would say the mature interior forests are, are really unique. Trails, vernal pools, that beautiful meadow. Alewives, who would have thought that you had fish coming up from the Atlantic and the sound and going back down. Opportunities for nearby nature schools. And I want to point out. In my travels, the parks were just incredibly well maintained, you know, litter is such a eyesore, it seems, wherever we go and the parks were litter free. And, and actually very, very free of invasives. So when we look at the natural resources, then we look at the threats, clearing in this case around, around the water invasive plants. And the recommendations would be such things as increasing vegetative buffers, getting rid of that mugwort. Connecting trails, it's a neat opportunity to connect the high school and middle school just north of Beach Memorial. And use the park as an outdoor living classroom. So those are the, and we did this with all 52 parcels. And for each one, and this is one reason, this is the reason why it's such a long report. We did G I S maps of all the various natural resources. In all the parks. And while I'm, I'm glad to hear that this is going to be used going forward. By the town, but if nothing else, it's a, it's a, it's a nature guide. Anybody can look at this and look at any of the, the parks and other pieces of open space. And really learn a lot about the natural resources there. So of course, I hope it's more than just a travel guide, but there's a lot of detail about each property. In addition to walking these properties and doing a field surveys over the last two years, of course. We reviewed and took advantage of all the great existing studies. I won't go through all this. Of course, the P O C D is, is where we started because that's your lead planning document. And the other really helpful studies were the, the two done. By the Paquonic, about the Paquonic River Watershed. In addition to that, and I'll get back to this, but your stormwater plan is, is very important and the annual reports. Tell about the progress the town has made. And when we talk about preventing flooding and increasing water quality. And controlling stormwater runoff, your, your stormwater plan is really the, the basis of it and a great. Great methods to follow. It was interesting to go through all these studies and they, I counted over 100 recommendations and they're all the same, as you can imagine. There's great agreement in your P O C D and the watershed plans, et cetera. Protect, protect the remaining open space you have. Do all you can to improve the water quality. The Paquonic River is impaired. That is polluted through most of Trumbull. And many residents benefit from clean water and streams and the, and the lakes and the lake communities. Encouraging green landscaping, again, by the many homes in town, but also. By businesses and schools and institutions and the town, town itself. And recommendations about good land use regulation enforcement. So that's the methodology very quickly. And let me turn to the outcomes or results. Again, I mentioned. Let me, I forgot to mention here the P O C D. Let me, let me go through this quickly because. Again, this is your planning document. The most important tool in town. It's created with the input of all the citizens and all the boards over time. And it recommends, again, it reinforces all those other recommendations. Preserve open space. Reduce stormwater runoff. Plant more trees and natural vegetations. Restore stream, stream buffers and do stormwater retrofits. And importantly, at the bottom there, your P O C D says. Recommends that you implement the Paquonic River Watershed Plan, which in addition to. Concentrating and promoting restoring stream buffers and retrofitting bad stormwater points. Recommends that you adapt a steep slope ordinance, recommends strengthening your riparian and watershed. And wetland ordinance and enforcement of that and recommends a tree management plan, which I know that Conservation Commission has. And has been working, working on for some time. Here we are on the results and we're going to run through quickly the recommendations. And again. These are all voluntary. These are just thrown out for thought. We've had several, multiple meetings, of course, with the Conservation Commission to make sure we're on the right track. We just recently met with the Sustainability Committee. And with all that guidance, we've come up with these recommendations. And as I say, it's a starting point. It's, it's voluntary. These are just recommendations. So again, I can't stress enough, in a town that's fairly built out. It's got to be the homeowners who, the homeowners have the most control of the environment. So through education and outreach, and I'm glad to hear about your webinars and your Facebook page. Getting people to plant native plants and control their stormwater, reduce their pervious surface, et cetera. You already have some great things to start with. I wasn't able to see, but there is a management plan to reduce pesticides and fertilizers. That the park department is using at Twin Brooks and Unity Park, which, which could be a great guide. At the bottom there, tree plantings are very popular across the country and the EPA's Green Streets Program. Can be used as a guide. And at the top there, you have a wonderful brochure, I'll show you now, from the Department of Public Works. And this would be, I think it was mailed out, I think, and it is on the website. And this sort of education has to be ongoing, in addition to a one-time mailing. You know, showing up at fairs, getting involved, as Kevin said, with the scouts and the garden clubs and other, other groups. Until this education is really accepted by landowners. I have three checkmarks there in this simple brochure really kind of summarizes. What all those other studies have said and what the NRA will recommend. Plant vegetative buffers, especially around watercourses. Direct homeowners and businesses, direct that stormwater away from the Paquonic River where it's going now. And reduce at the bottom, impervious surfaces as much as possible. Second recommendation is to preserve as much open space as you can. We came up with these opportunities, there are eight of them. I did not know the Hardy Group was considered for preservation. We came up with it independently, but I'm going to show you a couple of slides on that. There was a good question. From a citizen about the reasoning behind that. And I can offer a couple of reasons why that's a sensitive property. With only one to 2% of Trumbull still vacant. It just seems critical to be able to buy or preserve with conservation easements as much as you can. It costs money, but. President Trump just signed the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And Congress is funding it to the tune of $900 million for states and towns to use to buy open space. So. When things quiet down a bit, I'd want to be on the line with Senator Blumenthal and others to get in, in line with that. The point is. There is funding available. So I'm going to go through now. Quickly, these eight opportunities. The first one, and here they are shown. So you see the cemetery in the upper right, far right is Hidden Pond. The three just to the right of Route Eight are your remaining farms. And interestingly, interestingly, when you overlay prime farmland soils. In Trumbull, those three fall right on top. So. With, with prime farmland soil like that, talking about sustainability and local food. It would be, it's very important to preserve the farmland you have. On the upper left is Parler Rock. On the far left is across, is by the gazebo, behind the cider mill, across from the town hall. Lower left is Hardy Penkoff and at the bottom is the old Victorian house on 10 acres on Daniel's farm. So here's an interesting one. There's a, we call it the hole in the donut. At Parler Rock, at the northern tip of the Paquonic River Valley Park. Lo and behold, there's a for sale sign and this one acre could be developed, which. Even though it's only one acre, it would be such an in-your-face eyesore to the, to the river trail there. That it's a, it's an important opportunity for preservation. For scenic reasons, if nothing else. The second opportunity is at Hidden Pond. And I understand this has been slated for development in the past. This is outlined on the left in yellow. The town owns the properties around it. I've overlaid the flood risk here. And you can see that this property, which is very low and very wet. With that to be filled up with pervious surfaces, that, that flood risk would, would, would of course increase. And we have to think about with climate change, more heavier precipitation and perhaps more development. The flood risk is only going to grow, unfortunately. And as, in, in, instead of just preventing a flood on the positive side, if you look on the right, if you overlay. The town of Shelton, you can see that this parcel, along with the two parcels around it owned by the town now. Would hook up with several parcels to the north, protected by the town of Shelton and would make a beautiful trail system and greenway. And trails and greenways are recommended by your P O C D. The third one is that neat old Victorian that's in disrepair on Daniel's farm. And it's got 10 acres that backs up right to the Paquonic River. So that would be important to buffer the river instead of developing it. It also could provide public access to the river, which is an important thing to think about. The shot on the left just so shows how beautiful it is behind there. And now I'll turn to, again, I didn't know that the Hardy Penkoff was being looked at. But this is. 23 acres. It's, it's right in, right part of the Paquonic River Valley Park, so critical. You can see the contours here. Parts of it are extremely steep. So building on that is, is not recommended on steep slopes. Because it could, it will direct all that water into the Paquonic River, which is already impaired. On the right there, I have a parcel outlined in red at Valley, at the end of Valley View, which was recently. Scraped to put a, a building on. You can see how steep those scopes are. And here's a close up of it. The contours here are just too steep to reasonably build on. And this is a building that's going on in some spots over a 30% slope. And you can see the results. You just, you know, you can't fool Mother Nature. If you're going to bulldoze that kind of dirt onto a slope. It's not going to hold. And if you do, you should have controls in place, not bare soil. And the result is you get this. And on the right, you can see, even with the best intentioned construction site management. You can't hold back that water. And that is flowing unfortunately right into the Paquonic River. The third category of recommendations is. Protecting water quality, again, what you see over and over again, obvious concern. On the left is, is from the watershed plan, just showing, most people are surprised in Trumbull when we, we mentioned this, that. While the Paquonic River is, is clean when it comes. While the Paquonic River is, is clean when it comes into Trumbull. For 80% of the length it runs through Trumbull, it's classified as impaired, which is a euphemism for polluted. And as Kevin mentioned, because of high levels of bacteria and suspended solids. So there's a water pollution problem in the Paquonic River. And on the right you can see, and you know this, flooding is, is an issue in Trumbull, and it's going to be a bigger issue. So when we control stormwater, we're, we're working to mitigate against flooding. And, and I should mention that flood risk map there does not take into account future increases in precipitation and flooding due to climate change. I've got some, sorry to have to show you these, some startling stormwater erosion problems. On the, the west side of the Paquonic River Valley. And this is nobody's fault, you know, it's when you build up right to the edge and when homeowners, speaking of getting homeowners to be good stewards. Through good landscaping, you know, everybody wants a good view, when you clear right to the edge. You know, nothing can hold back this, and you get this, these scouring ravines. That are carrying phosphorus and nitrogen and those suspended solids and perhaps bacteria. Right into the Paquonic River. And I should mention, when you work to control stormwater and improve water quality, it's not just the Paquonic River. Again, you're, you're helping to keep your local streams clean. Your local ponds, your local lakes that help property values and that so many depend on. This is also, again, at the Paquonic River Valley, just gouges coming down from the side of the hill. Kind of a stark reminder why buildings should not take place on steep scopes. And we'll show some, some ways to mitigate it. Sometimes it's as simple, here's one more. At the Booth Hill Greenway, where you're getting, you have roads on all sides of the Booth Hill stream, and the Booth Hill Greenway is funneling this all down, and you just can't hold back this water without better stormwater control. So here I want to show you, sometimes, so we're not overwhelmed by the cost and the effort involved to control stormwater. Sometimes it's simply putting in riprap like, like the Park Department did here at Beach Memorial. In addition to this, the other stormwater remedies are things like vegetative swales. Bio-retention basins, rain gardens, things you're familiar with. Anything to slow down and capture the runoff and allow nature to, to treat it. And I mentioned, and I don't expect you to read this, I'm sorry it's so wordy, but your stormwater plan is really the, the go-to document to, to be the basis of how you're going to improve your water quality. So in the last year, 88 catch basins have been tested, this is a new requirement. Many of them had high levels of bacteria. Your town engineer found, and that's mainly failing septic. The federal stormwater regs are requiring going forward that you test for phosphorus and nitrogen. And that'll be interesting because that will pick up not just failing septic, but general stormwater problems. The town has disconnected one acre of about 1,500 acres of pervious surface DCIAs. The goal is 2% annually, that's pretty aggressive, so. We'd have a long way to go to meet that, but this was a project done at Long Hill Green Lot. Long Hill Green Parking Lot, where the town replaced the asphalt with permeable pavement. So the goal is to do 2% of that annually. The town has cleaned 10% of the catch basins, you've got 9,000. Your own goal is to clean all of them once a year. So again, that's a long way to go on that. I mentioned, these maintenance actions can be overwhelming and expensive, but if they're done on an ongoing basis as, as things come up. It's possible to fund this through the general fund. And I mentioned at the very bottom here. If you have a plan like this and your sustainable, Sustainability Committee does too, and your Conservation Commission is behind it, there's funding for this, and the Connecticut DEP would, would love to, I assume. Fund projects like, as Kevin mentioned, the Stream Bank Restoration at Old Mine Park. And stormwater retrofits, like we saw the problem at the Paquonic River Valley. So the stormwater plan is, is it's, it's, it's in print, it's updated every year, there's an annual report on it, and it's a good guide for improving your water quality. This, another recommendation we've come up with and was recommended in the Paquonic watershed plan. And every town wants to do more training, so that all your town employees that are doing inspections are well-versed in, you know, the latest stormwater control, L I D, and how to identify wetlands and vernal pools enforcement. The reports always want it to be stronger, we want it to be stronger, I understand enforcing, you know, I, I used to be a town supervisor. Enforcing these things is very difficult to do, you don't want to be slapping fines on citizens. But you have to find some carrot and stick to get people to cooperate. So on the left, here's an example. At Friar Lane, which is a town-owned property where a neighbor has clear-cut the trees and not only stuffed them on the, in the wetland buffer, but actually into the stream there, you know, that's a wetland violation. The one in the center there is at Mary Bill, where a stream has been filled in for a parking lot. You know, you, you can do that as long as you restore it. And then on the right, you saw that failing silt fence. A couple more examples where enforcement is, is necessary. At Indian Ledges, there's that, that fill is going right into the stream. At the bottom there, at the Nature Center. A neighbor abutting the Nature Center has clear-cut, everybody wants a better view, we understand that. But when you do that, you're going to have a lot of pollution running down in the, in the brook. And at the right, there's another example of a landowner bulldozing and pushing right to the edge of the Paquonic River Valley, and you can see the runoff. Sorry, those are ugly pictures. The, the last three recommendations are very quick. Let me go back and finish up on the training, so. The recommendations, you know, refresher training for town employees. Reviewing the wetland law and enforcement, right now, if someone in town violates the wetland law. They go back and they get a permit, and they're slapped with a 200% surcharge. Sometimes that's not enough to discourage wetland violations if you're not going to get caught, and the Connecticut statutes allow wetland violations as high as $1,000 a day. A tree management plan would be a very good way to keep vegetation on the hillsides and all the benefits of trees that you know about, and cleaner air and shade and beauty. And there is a tree management plan the Conservation Commission has worked on. I understand their, their concerns, it might be an expense. We did an inventory for the town of Mount Kisco, they have a management, tree management plan. They have three volunteers who go out, who are well-versed in trees. And they look at the trees and see, should they be cut or not, what should they be replaced with? At no cost to the town or the citizen, so it is workable. Construction mitigation has to be reviewed because silt fences are failing. And then in our travels, we found on six of these town properties. Neighbors just mowing town property into lawn. I, you can't fault them because there's not clearly delineated property line, but if you would just post with signs, the town property, I think that would be a fair way to discourage the neighbors from continuing to trespass on the, on the town parks there. And then finally, steep slope ordinance is recommended by the watershed plan. You know, maybe a tree management plan that retains vegetation on steep scopes is, is an easier way to do that. That's up to you. Finally, three quick recommendations and we're done, and these are all very popular ones. Everybody wants to go out and hike, so. In our surveys, we were able to find, you know, some really neat connections that can be made in the parks, and here's a nice one, just as an example, and there are a bunch of examples in the inventory. Old Tashwa Tree Farm in green on the left. You know, when we do the GIS maps, you see that the Aquarian property is on both sides. And sometimes the water companies will allow trails to be permitted on their property. And that can connect to Tashwa Knolls in the recreational area and create a really nice trail, and we hiked that with the Conservation Commission, it's really a beautiful sight. That with trails, you know, the public would, would be using more. And on the right, just another example of how if you look across the border, you can have these kind of neat greenway or trail connections to the town of Shelton. And be able to walk to the Trap Falls Reservoir from your Halibut Preserve. It just needs trails to be blazed and some signage. Invasive plants, I said, I was surprised to see, pleased to see, not a real big problem. Although it is most other places, and we have recommendations there, I won't go through it. On the lower right there is the Meadow at Twinbrooks Park, and unfortunately invasive mugwort always is a battle, and that's starting to take over there, and it'd be a shame to see that Meadow ruined by mugwort. And the last slide, and this dovetails with what Kevin was talking about. Climate change was not in the purview of the inventory, but because, because it is an issue that affects Trumbull directly through flooding. You know the laundry list of things that you can do, and the Sustainability Committee is going to be working on to reduce the effects of climate change, and most importantly, directly to Trumbull. Reduce the threat of flooding. So that's it, and I can stop there, and if you have questions, if there is time or comments. If there's not time, I'd love the feedback on what is missing, what should be emphasized, and we'll be working with the Conservation Commission, Sustainability Committee. I'd like to work with the Land Acquisition Committee. And as Kevin was emphasizing, working together with all the different park department and commissions in town to follow through on this.
I just want to thank Mr. Norgren, this was, this is Chairman Thornton, it was a fantastic presentation. And I, I wanted him to give this presentation to the entire town council because he gave it to the Conservation Commission. And we have a larger audience here, and it will bring it to, to more residents. Which I think need to be educated, I think that's where it starts, as you were saying in some of your, your presentation. Our, our residents have to be educated. Because many of them, if they knew these things, they would be helping out. It's just that they don't know. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Norgren?
I, I had a few questions.
Okay, Mr. Labrandy?
Yeah.
You're on mute.
Sorry, I just wanted to add a few notes to what Mr. Norgren put in there. The list of open space areas to preserve. You know, 147 Daniel's Farm Road where the old Victorian houses, that's actually private property, and that's actually up for development right now. So that list is actually getting smaller and smaller as, you know, as days go by, so also Gate of Heaven Cemetery. I know that they have interest in possibly donating some land to the town in the rear of it, because it's all wetland area that's non-developed or able to be developed, so that's definitely something that town should be looking into as well. In terms of enforcement, we have, actually some of those pictures that Jim had. Actually, myself and our zoning enforcement officer went out there and started the violation process for one or two of those, and they're actually coming in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission pretty soon for soil erosion stabilization and correcting the violation, so. It's great that you took those pictures too, so that we know that it's, you know, the community sees it, everybody sees it, so. We're really able to move forward on those violations fairly quickly and resolve them with our staff and our engineering department as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob, and again, the NRA can be used by P and Z as that Daniel's Farm property comes for development and for any of the other properties that come forward for development. So I hope it's a helpful tool.
Yeah, I definitely see this coming, working hand-in-hand with our P O C D, especially, you know, it was approved in 2014, so. Time's kind of running its course with our current P O C D, so this is definitely something that we could definitely add to it, as well as our zoning regulations too.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none, thank you very much. Thank you to our Sustainability Committee. Thank you to our Conservation Commission, everyone who joined us this evening, talking about this very important work. And very important plan of conservation for the town of Trumbull. We will move on now to our resolutions, and in the order that best serves our time left here. I would like a motion to take Resolution TC 28-112 out of order and hear that first. So moved on, Contapio?
Second, Tom Whitmoyer.
Thank you. Councilman Miller, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-112 to the floor for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. Resolution TC 28-112, be resolved with the recommendation by the First Selectman of the appointment of Andrew Lubin, 55 Killian Avenue. Being the same as hereby approved as an alternate member of the Ethics Commission for term extended the first Monday of December 2021. Two-thirds vote of the town council required.
Thank you, may I have a second with your name?
Second, Tom Whitmoyer.
Thank you, committee report, please.
Mary Beth, this is Tony Sinto. I'd like to recuse myself on this matter, please.
All right, Councilmen Sinto, you know.
I'll, I'll log out, and then Carl's going to text me when you guys are done, okay?
Okay, very good. Committee report, please.
Mr. Lubin was not present, the chair noted, Mr. Lubin is already a member of the Ethics Commission. Attorney Shopik explained after looking at the commission's membership, it was realized there were four Democrats on the commission, which is contrary to the charter. Mr. Lubin is stepping down as a full member, and it is the First Selectman's recommendation to appoint him as an alternate member. This solves the issue. Moved by Whitmoyer to pass without recommendation, vote, motion carried by unanimous consent. Ms. Katzke explained it was understood that Mr. Lubin had already been interviewed by the town council for his seat as a full member. Therefore, he would not need to be interviewed again. The chair asked the committee for their thoughts, the consensus of the committee was that they would not need to interview Mr. Lubin again. And he would not need to appear at the full town council meeting. Moved by Paulson, seconded by Whitmore to reconsider the motion, vote, motion carried by unanimous consent. Vote, motion carried by unanimous consent.
Hey, thank you very much for that report, is there any further discussion regarding this resolution?
Madam Chair, Carl Masaro.
Yes.
I I understand that when the council voted in various members. There were not four Democrat members in the regular seats. So my question to whomever can answer it is, how, how did it come to pass that there were four Democrats in regular seats?
I'll answer that, Madam Chair, this is Dan Shopik, the town attorney. It was just oversight, you have Mr. Reverend Fullerton. John Walkley. Third name is escaping me, somebody's got to help me. But.
Well, the last, the last person we put on was Charlie Slack, he was unaffiliated.
Yes, Charlie Slack's a Democrat also.
Was he not unaffiliated at the time we put him on?
No, as far as I know, he was a Democrat, he's, he's listed in, and in his, I believe that when he filled out. He's listed in, and it is, I believe that when he filled out his application, he identified himself as a Democrat. So that, I guess, is where the error was. And it, I think there may have been a thought on people's part that he was unaffiliated, but it turned out he wasn't. And so way to solve the problem is Mr. Lubin has resigned as a regular member and would like to go on as a, as an alternate.
So the council, well, then we need a recommendation from the First Selectman, and we would fill the vacancy of the regular seat.
Yes, so we'll be reg, vacancy of the regular seat. That needs to be filled by a Republican unaffiliated. All right, there's the.
There's also a vacant alternate.
There actually, yeah, this will be, there'll be another vacant. There was, there was an alternate, Marty McCann was an alternate, and he resigned. So Andy Lubin will have one seat. You're gonna need a Republican alternate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, we'll bring this appointment to a vote. Can we have a unanimous vote on this? So we don't need a roll call? Yes.
Madam Chairman, excuse me. I saw Lisa Valenti's hand go up. I don't know if she had a question.
Okay, thank you. I did not see that. I actually don't see Lisa Valenti on my screen. I guess there are too many people here.
My only question would be if we were, perhaps even an audit should be done on other committees so we're in compliant, maybe just a quick overview or like an inventory of what positions need to be filled or need to be corrected.
That is being worked on.
Great.
It's in progress right now.
That's a good point. I think they're constantly being reviewed, and there are so many of them that it's difficult to get to all of them. But they're constantly being reviewed by the First Selectman's office. Can we have a unanimous vote or or not?
I believe we can.
Okay, council votes unanimously for the appointment of Andrew Lubin to the alternate seat on our Ethics Commission. And now Councilman Sinto returns, and we move forward.
Madam Chair, before you do that, I would ask the council to approve that as emergency legislation.
Oh, we're almost done with the emergency legislation.
This will be the last one.
I'll make that motion. I'll second Joanne Glasser Orinstine.
Of course, okay. Can we, can we agree on a unanimous vote for emergency legislation? I'm guessing, yes. Okay, the council unanimously votes for the emergency legislation. Okay, and now I'd like a motion to take Resolution TC 28-114 out of order. That is number four. I'd like to take it next in the order. Just trying to expedite everything.
So moved.
Don Cantapio, second.
Thank you. Councilman Gaudiano, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-114 to the floor for us?
Unanimous consent, Madam Chair.
All right, Resolution TC 28-114, be it resolved that Resolution TC 27-55, adopted by the Town Council on April 2nd, 2018, as amended by the Town Council by Resolution TC 27-80 on July 2nd, 2018. It's hereby further amended by adding five members to the Sustainability Team, one member from the Trumbull Nature and Art Center, three members of the community, and one Town Council member. Be it further resolved that the Town Council member shall be appointed by the Town Council Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a second with your name? A second, Don Cantapio. Thank you. Committee report, please.
Mary Isaac was present and indicated she joined the Sustainability Team approximately a year ago. There are many committees throughout the state that are working towards certification. Trumbull is working towards bronze for sustainability. Trumbull has a very small working group and is trying to expand their team's size. Everyone has their own level of expertise, some having recycling and other areas such as the nature center. They are trying to not make this a small effort in hopes to expand by five members. It was explained this is a team, not a committee. Currently, they only have one person that was on the original team and has been very busy due to COVID. Currently, they have two people from the Conservation Commission, one from TNAK and one Town Council member. And there is a group of four volunteers who have been amazing. This certification takes a lot of work. The team will look at communications in Trumbull, recycling, and reducing packaging. It is sustainability for multiple applications. Most who are working are volunteers and want to make sure they are able to be part of the team. Attorney Shopek explained this was established in 2018 under state statute, which established the team. There were other options such as committee, but it was established as a team. Ms. Isaac explained there are approximately 100 different areas in Connecticut that are looking into this, and all aren't a Town Council or Commission. They are different types of working groups. Fairfield, Westport, Weston, Wilton are on Facebook where you can see many of these groups. Many towns are working on this and are very difficult, are very different than a committee formed by town government. Trumbull is still in the infant stage. The people who have been working on this for Trumbull want to make sure they are part of the team going forward. When this was established, there were two members from the Conservation Commission and the Town Planner. For the number of things they want to accomplish, there would be no way this small group could accomplish all they want to. They are thrilled to have the extra people and want them to be acknowledged. The team reports to the Town Council. Since COVID, they have met via Zoom. First Selectman Tesoro explained when the team was created, it was created under state statute and based on the statutory language. Attorney Shopek suggested going back to the April 2nd, 2018 Town Council minutes and/or the backup for the meeting, which would have more information on the creation and makeup of this. Ms. Katsky stated there is a state website, And under the tab Municipal Support, it speaks to how to form the sustainability team. There are many options, i.e. using a pre-existing commission or members could be appointed or be solely volunteers. Trumbull followed the model resolution template that is provided on that website. It was thought it would be good to have the stakeholders from a couple different locations. The feeling was that it wasn't all conservation-related. There are different aspects. This resolution will bring in a person from the TNAK because there's a lot of knowledge there, period. There are volunteers that have stepped up and have been going to meetings even though they are not technically members of this team. This resolution would give them a seat at the table. Ms. Isaac stated part of the group is preservation, town communications, and certain things she had knowledge about. Another volunteer has solar and energy savings knowledge, and another has expertise in recycling. This is a multi-task project. It will enable the town to receive grant funding. This is a great thing for sustainability efforts. Vote motion carried by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Councilman Marsh. I think the length of those minutes indicate this team definitely needs to be bigger. My gosh.
That was longer than the presentation.
Or our minutes need to be shorter, either one.
This team needs more people to support their minutes. So is there any other discussion regarding this resolution? I think the minutes say it all. Okay, hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. Can I ask for a unanimous consent to approve the resolution? Seeing heads shaking, yes?
Yes, unanimous consent.
Terrific. Okay, council passes through unanimous consent. And once again, I'm going to take Resolution TC 28-113 out of order. Councilman Chively, would you please bring that resolution to the floor for us? So moved on, Cantapio?
So my apologies, are we doing the 113 or 111?
113.
113, thank you.
Be it resolved. Bruce Bellstein on Don Cantapio's motion to take it out of order.
Oh, sure, sorry.
I'm sorry, that was.
I think we can do unanimous consent on that.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's unanimous consent.
Thank you. Resolution TC 28-113, be it resolved that funding for a labor agreement between the Town of Trumbull Board of Education and the Trumbull Administrators Association beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending July, or June 30th, 2024 is hereby rejected.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second, Joanne Glasser Orinstine.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
The chair noted if discussion was necessary, the committee would need to recess for a non-meeting. Moved by Masaro, seconded by Whitmore to go into recess. Vote motion carried by unanimous consent. The LNA Committee recessed at 7:00 PM. Moved by Whitmore, seconded by Masaro to end recess. Vote motion carried by unanimous consent. The LNA Committee ended the recess at 7:23 PM. The chair noted a yes vote would reject the funding, and a no vote is to be in favor of the funding. The clerk called the roll call vote and recorded as follows. All were nay votes. Marsh, Whitmore, Gaudiano, Paulson, Masaro, Lemoine. Vote motion failed.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to remind our council members, due to wording of a state statute, this body as a legislative body needs to vote to reject this funding so that this labor agreement goes forward. It's, it doesn't make sense intuitively, but that's the way it is. And we have our esteemed Town Attorney Shopek on the line in case anyone would like to ask him that question.
Mary Beth, I think the, excuse me, Madam Chair, the, this is Jason Marsh. I think the correct way to put this is if we want the funding to go forward, the motion asks us to reject the funding. So we have to vote no on the rejection to allow the funding to go forward. It is a creature of statute and very oddly worded, but that is the way it is.
Thank you, Councilman Marsh, for that legal ease. Does anyone have any questions regarding this, this resolution? I know we spoke about it in executive session during committee. Is there any need to go into executive session this evening?
Madam.
Councilman Masaro?
I have a couple of questions. I don't think I need executive session for, I don't know, Councilwoman Schwartz. Did you have?
I did, if, if you wouldn't mind. I just had, I had a quick question, and I don't think it's one that needs to be asked in executive session. I'd like to know if this contract has been ratified by the teachers' union? And if so, when was that done?
The administrators' union, it's not the teachers' union.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
I think Dr. Bud is here someplace.
Hi, everyone. Yes, Laurie, the administrators ratified it approximately a month ago.
Okay, and were there any major points of contention that we have to have, know what they are, just because?
No, no, we settled this prior to mediation, actually, because it was a fair wage settlement in, in our judgment, in the board's judgment, I should say. And there were no substantive language changes. So just briefly, as a three-year agreement, it's a 1.99% general wage increase each year. The group represents 20 and a half, 20.45 administrators, nearly all of whom are at the top step. So that 1.99 controls nearly everybody. The insurance, starting in one more year, goes up half a percentage point each year in employee sharing. And all substantive language remained. As I mentioned at the LNA meeting, the, the salary impact to the budget of that 1.99 is slightly over $80,000 from this year into next year when it would take effect.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bud.
Thank you, Dr. Bud. Thank you for coming this evening. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Councilman Masaro with a question for Dr. Bud through the chair.
Yes.
Does this agreement contain any COVID or pandemic or emergency type provisions? By example, workplace protections, work requirements during, you know, modified conditions such as we have now? Is there, is there anything?
No, this contract is silent on almost any topic related to that. Some of you are familiar with the teachers' agreement, which is very lengthy and has some provisions that kind of relate to those topics. But this administrative contract, as you can tell by the large spot size, really sticks to the basics. Some of those things you mentioned, Carl, are mentioned in policy. But typically with this group, we have very strong labor relations. And so there's nothing in the contract on those issues.
Okay, thank you.
I should say also, if I may, Mary Beth, this group was reduced by two employees from June to where we are now as a result of budget mitigation. So whereas we had 22 and a half people in June, we now have 20.45 people in the, in the organization.
Thank you. That's important to note as well. Thank you, Dr. Bud. Any further discussion regarding this resolution? Seeing none, we'll call it to a vote. Can I have a unanimous vote on this one?
Mary Beth, this is Tony. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes on this.
So we need to do, we need to.
Need a roll call.
Do a roll call.
Be a roll call.
Call vote, please. Don Cantapio?
I believe I'm voting yes to be, to reject.
It would be no.
No.
About no?
Yeah.
The motion, just for clarification, the motion is to reject the funding. So if you want the funding to pass, you have to vote no on the motion to reject.
Oh, no.
Bill Mecca?
I vote no.
Mike Miller?
No.
Donna Sidell?
Me, no.
Mary Isaac?
No.
Tony Sinto?
Yes.
Kevin Chively?
No.
Thomas Whitmore?
No.
Jason Marsh?
No.
Carl Masaro?
No.
Eric Paulson?
Nope.
Laurie Rosasco Schwartz?
No.
Joanne Glasser Orinstine?
Yes.
No, I meant, no.
Eva Lemoine?
No.
Joe Garrix?
No.
Bruce Bellstein?
No.
Joy Cologne?
No.
Ashley Gaudiano?
No.
And Lisa Valente?
No.
Okay, motion passes.
No, it doesn't.
I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Shopek. On track, okay. All right, and now we're at the final resolution of the evening. Councilman Garrix, would you please bring Resolution TC 28-111 to the floor for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. Resolution TC 28-111, be it resolved that the purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of real property known as 16 Hardy Lane, 19 Hardy Lane, 26 Hardy Lane, 29 Hardy Lane, and 38 Hardy Lane, Trumbull, Connecticut, is hereby approved. And it further resolved that First Selectman Vicky A. Tesoro is hereby authorized to execute any agreements or take any necessary steps to complete the acquisition.
Thank you. May I have a second with your name?
Don Cantapio, second.
Thank you. Committee report, please.
The chair noted if there was to be discussion on this item, they would need a motion to go into executive session. Moved by Masaro, seconded by Gaudiano to enter into executive session to discuss an ongoing contract with the following people present: Jason Marsh, Chairman, Thomas Whitmore, Vice Chairman, Ashley Gaudiano, Eric Paulson, Carl A. Masaro Jr., Steve Lemoine, Joy Cologne, alternate, Tony Sinto, alternate, Town Attorney Daniel Shopek, First Selectman Vicky A. Tesoro,[1730.38] Town Attorney Daniel Shopek, First Select Vicky Atesoro, and Town Council Chairman Mary Beth Thornton. Vote, motion carried by unanimous consent. The LNA committee entered executive session at 7:45 PM. Moved by Massaro, seconded by Gaudiano to end executive session. Vote, motion carried by unanimous consent. The LNA committee ended executive session at 8:05 PM. Vote, motion carried by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Councilman Marsh. And the documents concerned, that were, are concerned in this resolution were made available to all of the council members. And we will go into executive session to discuss those documents because they are not public. And I believe Bilchin has sent us a link to go into executive session. And only those members of the council may attend, and of course.
I would move to enter executive session.
Second.
Madam Chair, this is Dan Shopek. I would ask also that Mr. Richard White, who's the Vice Chairman of Land Acquisition Committee, come into executive session. If Rena Bacalar is here, Cindy Katsky is here, in addition to First Selectmen, who have worked on this land acquisition, it can help to explain it to the council.
Hey, this is Tony. Since I got a question for Mr. Shopek or anyone. Is, is Maria here tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I didn't see her on the thing. I just thought I'd ask. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So now I'll ask those invited to executive session to please leave this meeting and go into executive session.
Hi, Margaret. Hi. Carl motioned to go out of executive session and Don Cantafio seconded.
Thank you.
Somebody's echoing.
That's me.
Today, I consider myself.
Margaret, you had enough time to do your minutes. You're done. You're also muted.
Oh, that's probably a better thing.
Do we need to make this emergency legislation?
It's not necessary.
Sorry, Don.
It, it wouldn't hurt, but it's not, it really is not necessary.
Is everybody back?
I don't think so. And I can't see everyone for some reason.
Oh, maybe we are all back. I think we are. Okay, we're all back. From executive session, and now we are going to take a vote on Resolution TC 28-111. Do we need a roll call vote or is the vote unanimous?
Unanimous.
No, I'm not.
Okay, well then we'll have a roll call vote, please. Don Cantafio.
Yes.
Bill Mecca.
Yes.
Donna Sidell.
Yes.
Oh, very good. Mike Miller.
Yes.
Mary Isaac.
Yes.
Tony Sinto.
No.
Keith, Kevin Shively.
Yes.
Thomas Whitmore.
Yes.
Jason Marsh.
Yes.
Carl Massaro.
Yes.
Eric Paulson.
Yes.
Lori Rosasco Schwartz.
No.
Joanne Glasser Ornstein.
Yes.
Steve Lemoine.
No.
Joe Garrick.
Yes.
Bruce Elstein.
Yes.
Joy Cologne.
Yes.
Ashley Gaudiano.
Yes.
And Lisa Valente.
I'm abstaining.
Very good. Let the record reflect, the chair would like to vote yes on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with no further business this evening, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Don Cantafio.
Madam Chairman, excuse me, sorry.
I withdraw.
Sorry. If I could, I would just like to say a few words about the COVID situation in Trumbull, if I could. I won't be long. I know the hour's late. So just, I, I just wanted to let all of you know and the public who may be watching at this point in time that there's a new tracking map that is being used for the, the COVID issue in the state of Connecticut. I don't know if you're all aware of it. But Trumbull is now orange on this map. That was the data that came out today. That map goes from gray, which is the lowest number of cases, to yellow, to orange, and to red, which is the highest. So we have, last week moved to the yellow. We are now at the orange, which means we're at the 14 per 100,000 cases and very close to moving into the red zone. So if you look at this tracking map, which is on our website, you will see that there's now over 100 towns in Connecticut that have moved e- either into the orange or the red zone. So I just really want to let people know where we are. Also, beginning tomorrow, we are going back to Phase 2. It's actually called Phase 2.1. And that is the whole state is going back to that phase. Up to, I'm sorry. I thought somebody said something. Anyways, we're at Phase, going back to Phase 2. It's called 2.1. Up until this week, it was really up to the municipalities themselves whether they wanted to move back to Phase 2. But that has, was repealed and now it's returned to statewide protective measures as it was in the spring. So this Phase 2.1, restaurants will reduce to 50% capacity with a maximum of eight people limited to a table. Restaurants and entertainment venues such as bowling alleys, movie theaters and arcades will require to close at 9:30 PM, with the exception of food takeout and delivery service, which is allowed to continue after 9:30. Personal services such as hair salons, barber shops will remain at 75% capacity. Event venues will be limited to 25 people indoor, 50 people outdoor. Performing art venues and movie theaters will have a capacity of 100 people. And religious gatherings will be limited to 50% capacity or 100 people maximum. And this is not required, but employers are now reminded to maximize telework to the extent possible. And those people over 60 and with chronic conditions are urged to remain home as much as possible. There will be further information in the next few days about new sector rules for youth sports as well. So I will just continue to say, as I always do, that this is not a reason to panic, but we should continue to remain vigilant in dealing with this virus. And that would mean to please continue practice social distancing and wear a mask when you're unable to social distance indoors or outdoors. So that is a brief update. Anyone have any questions?
I do have a question on the color coding of the, the levels.
Yep.
So the orange level is, is 15 for 100,000?
No, it's, the orange level is from 10 to, to 15 or 14.9 or whatever. 15 begins the, the red. We're at about 14.2 as of the data that was given today.
So that's a, a measure against 100,000 population? So we, we have about a third of that population. You have four or five cases?
No, no, we have many more cases than that, Carl. That's, there's actually a formula that's used to equalize the, the towns to make this comparison. I can, I can give you that information. I don't have it offhand how they, how they do that.
And then the number of cases in town.
Yeah.
Population that's affecting, is, is it nursing homes? Variance in the spring.
Well, I'm sure there are. I could go to the, the dashboard to look at that exactly, but the cases are really in the community. We don't, as far as I know, and I'd have to verify this, we don't have, I don't believe we have any hospitalizations. And we certainly have had no deaths for a, a couple months or more at this point. But we just don't obviously want to revert to that, you know? So I can't tell you offhand. I'd have to look at the data to see whether there are more cases in the nursing homes again. Of course, most of our deaths of the 125 people that, that passed away, I believe 104 of them were in our nursing homes. But we have not had any deaths, as I said, in at least probably a couple of months or more at this point.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, are we ready to adjourn now?
Now I'll make my motion to adjourn.
There you go.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Everyone have a nice evening.
Wear your mask.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks. Good night.
Weekend, thank you.